All right, roll call, it's meeting order.
Tom, would you like to leave?
Yes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd Ward.
Here.
Greg Nelson.
Here.
Tom Jordan.
Here.
Dick Samples.
Here.
Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Yes.
Harry Jennings.
Here.
John Green. Tim Mann. Rich Evans. Tiffany Peter.
Here.
Rob Cross.
Okay, for the agenda, I'd like to add a closed session after our action items for five ILCS 122C11. It's for matters of litigation. Unless there's, I've got it written down here. Unless there's any other additions or corrections, a motion to approve the agenda with that addition, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Comments from the floor? None, we'll move right into our action items. We have engagements of service for Alice Hancock. We have the contract agreement in front of us, so a motion to approve that contract agreement.
My own personal business, I'd like to put this over to in the next week's meeting, I guess, and bring this on kind of the whole board in a, you know, workshop.
At the twenty ninth?
Yes.
So you're making a motion to table this?
I'm gonna make a motion to table this until the, our actual next meeting, which would be, I don't know when it's gonna be, September.
Oh, our actual board meeting, I'm sorry.
Our actual board meeting, but, but bring this up at the.
Yeah, table it till the board meeting, it'd be the, the fifth is the board.
The fifth, yeah, table till the fifth, but discuss it at the twenty ninth.
Motion, uh, second to table it?
I'll second it.
Roll call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Approval of hire part-time water clerk, Robin McQueen at sixteen dollars per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
And was that the one we discussed at the other meeting?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, same one, yeah, she's a part-time, she just fills in when, when our other water clerk is on vacation.
She's been here for sixty.
Is that Tiffany, that's a normal rate she made before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a.
It's just a vacation type deal?
Well, it's just a couple of when Carlos not.
Okay, yeah.
And it's only as a recommendation of Jeff, well, I, um, that's the only reason why he's removing us, it's just a classification for this.
Right. No, and I think that came up at the meeting, and that was a really good thing, yeah.
Give me a second, is that?
Yes, Jason.
Okay, sir, roll call.
It was Tom, Tom.
Tom?
Yeah, I think he beat me in the punch.
A lot more muscle over there.
Dick Samples.
Yes.
Todd Ward.
Yes.
Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Yes.
Greg Nelson.
Yes.
Tom Jordan.
Yes.
Now, the boat races, they asked for fifteen hundred plus the, the amount to cover Lifestar, and I know our chief says we could cover, go ahead, which days?
Yeah, so if you guys want to do a quarter of this, we can cover Saturday and Sunday with our ambulance and personnel. That's what it costs, pay our employees around four hundred, maybe a little bit more, depends on if the hours run over. I will say, you just text me back, you guess him maybe around, it's gonna, Lifestar will charge around four to six hundred for that Friday.
Around four to six hundred, so he's asking for fifteen hundred, so. You just wanna say up to twenty-five hundred, and then if it's more than that, I mean.
You said four hundred altogether for your two days?
For our two days, I have to double check with him on the hours, I'm pretty sure he said ten to four on Saturday and noon to four on Sunday.
That just seems kinda low.
Yeah, so that's two, two personnel, twenty dollars each.
Okay.
But we'll just pay them directly out of tours, and we won't, that won't have to be part of this grant, so.
But we're just gonna pick up what it would cost for Friday only, right?
Yeah, so we do the fifteen hundred that we, that he's originally asking for, and then we don't pay Lifestar direct, or out of the, out of grant.
I see what you're saying, you say up to twenty-five, that way if it runs over, whatever.
I mean, it's whatever you guys think, I mean, I'm just throwing out.
Who pays Lifestar?
Yeah, how were you saying we pay Lifestar?
Well, we could do it either way, they could pay Lifestar and we reimburse them, or we could pay Lifestar direct, that's up to you guys.
Oh, okay. For the Friday, you're saying.
For just the Friday, but, yeah, but that's up to you guys, if you wanna, however you want to, that's totally.
I think we should pay the boat races and let them, that's my law.
Put it in as, put it in as part of their app.
Let them take care of all that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask you, is what you preferred.
Yeah, so, so even if it was six hundred for the Friday, and then four hundred for us, and then the fifteen hundred additional, that's twenty-five. Altogether.
Altogether.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys wanna make the motion for, up to however much, and how, whatever stipulations you wanna put on.
Well, I mean, if, if we make the motion for the twenty-five, and let's say it costs us five hundred instead of four hundred.
Well, we just pay our guys straight out of tours, and we don't have to pay them, and then wait for them to reimburse our guys. The only one I would want them to pay for, and unless, unless our, Tiffany disagrees, I'd say have them pay Lifestar, but us pay our guys would be the most efficient way. Yeah.
So we need two thousand then?
Two thousand, twenty, twenty-one, it's up to six hundred, probably twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to pay them twenty-one hundred, and they will pay Lifestar, and we will pay our guys.
Sounds good.
Or maybe you should put in there, just in case it's a different amount, or fifteen hundred plus the Lifestar bill.
Right, 'cause if it's four hundred.
'Cause what if it's like twenty-one fifty, or, I don't know.
That's why I said up to twenty-five, that way there's a cap, that way there's a cap on it, and then.
There's a cap, you don't wanna have too much, but you wanna be sure it covers Lifestar in case they're misfloating somehow.
So.
So scribble that out, Megan, and try and.
So fifteen hundred dollars plus the amount of Lifestar for the one day, whatever that amount is, up to a total, grand total of twenty-five, a maximum of twenty-five.
Yeah, 'cause it should be less than that, yeah. Does that sound good to you, chief?
I'll second that.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Yes.
Greg Nelson.
Yes.
Tom Jordan.
Yes.
Dick Samples.
Yes.
Todd Ward.
All right, a motion to close our action items and close our open meeting.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
You wanna do the closed meeting before the old business and new business?
Okay.
Don't go away, no, I mean, out there.
Yeah, roll call to go, to close that. No, not to end the meeting, we're just ending the open session, we're gonna go in closed session.
Yeah, and then we'll come back. Yes, we'll give you time to eat. Greg Nelson.
Yes.
Tom Jordan.
Yes.
Dick Samples.
Yes.
Todd Ward.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Who?
Paul Stewart. Yes. She said Jason Hill.
Motion to go in the open session.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please. Go ahead, let me.
Okay.
Need to soundproof this room.
Tom Jordan.
Tom, roll call.
Tom.
Roll call.
Yeah.
One moment, let's finish our roll call.
Dick Samples.
Yes.
Todd Ward.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Yes.
Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Greg Nelson.
Yes.
All right, you got your form there.
Yeah, give me a second.
Okay, I just watched it from across the street, I'm Gaila Alquist, Virginian.
How's it going?
You're from Virginia.
No.
No?
Right here, Jacksonville.
But originally.
Weren't you a cop in Virginia, though?
Axle.
Axle, okay.
Looked here.
Your name is wrong, okay, wait till I, and, okay, I just have a quick question, I live, I own the house three of Dewey Drive. This is something I asked before, and I saw there's a tourism grant for boat races.
Yes, ma'am.
And what, we had heard this is put off till twenty-twenty, so.
Heard what's been put off till twenty-twenty?
The park, do we, doing anything with this?
There, we've not even discussed it yet, so no, why, have you heard we were, like, there was something in the works?
We, we've discussed revamping that park, but as far as maybe you've gotten the discussion is, in order to use tour, is that, I don't wanna use up your time, so are those, I mean, go ahead, go ahead and make your questions.
Why, we heard TIP money, and we heard tourism grant money is gonna be used.
Uh, no, I don't think we could use TIP money on it, um, I mean, I guess we could, kind of, it's, is it?
It's in the TIP history.
It's in the, the park's not, Village Hall is, the park's not.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but in order to use tourism money on a park, it has to be a quote destination site.
Right, which.
A destination site is kinda loosely defined, but, um, we've kinda searched ourselves, like, what to do with it, it's not a big park. So, and we've said this a few times to the public, like, if anybody has ideas for, um, what they'd like to see in it, speak up, we're all ears.
Okay, I did talk with Tom and Dick Samples after one meeting, and, uh, both all were, 'cause we see what the kids do from South Jackson.
Absolutely.
And the teachers come over, and at the end of the last school year, I went to the teachers, and I'm like, you know, they're gonna do something with this park, and I'm like, no! And I said, I would suggest have the kids come up with some ideas, and the teachers, they're the ones that use it, we see it all the time, through our windows.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And let the kids get involved, make it a community, make it a village, let them come up with some ideas, but do not put a building.
Oh.
Do you know who, uh, do you know who the principal is over there?
Nobody, I don't.
Yeah, Tim, he's great.
Why don't you go ask him, and see if they can make a little, a, a contest or something to revitalize the park, or, or whatever, I mean, they can come up with, Tim can work with us, and.
Yeah.
But it has to be, like I said, it has to be something that's a quote destination site, and give you some examples, um, Jacksonville Skate Park, that could be a destination site, their dog park is a destination site. For us, the Play Farrel Park with the special needs equipment is, the splash pad is, um, things that draw people from out of town and wanna come to that site.
That's for TIP money.
No, no, that's for the tourism money.
Tourism grant, so.
Not tourism grant, that's our tourism fund that we have, we issue tourism grants, but we have tourism fund money, that, that's where that tourism grants come from, and what that is, is that's a special tax on the local hotel rooms that every municipality in Illinois has.
So you're giving the money for boat races?
Yes, out of the tourism fund.
How much?
Uh, up to twenty-five hundred.
I was just wondering, because, frankly, that could go a long way across the street, uh, so I can get a hold of, and it has to be quote, I know, a destination.
Yes, destination site, if we wanna use tourism funds, otherwise it has to come out general fund, which doesn't have a lot of leeway.
But you don't have. Okay, so, and the destination, you mentioned special needs.
Which we are, we, we don't wanna duplicate what we already have, so we're trying to find something different, if that makes sense.
Well, you don't want water, 'cause we know the problems you have over it.
We don't want something that's high maintenance, we don't want something that's long-term cost.
Green space.
Green space, I love that idea.
'Cause this is also a very small area, and you've got homes around there, and we are very aware.
Excuse me?
Yeah, exactly, and we are very aware of that, right.
We don't want something noisy.
We know how the kids use it, so.
We don't want something noisy, like basketball hoops can be noisy, especially in the evenings, if you got close, houses that close, trust me, if you let kids dump in the basketball, it can be very loud.
Well, someone else had mentioned that, that we see them trying to play basketball out there, and tell us, forget it, but even though they try, but it's not, uh.
That hasn't been usable for years, has it, the tennis court?
Surface is way too rough.
Pretty bad shape, yeah.
You know what the kids use it for, what the teachers love about that?
What, do they run?
No, they can play kickball, and they don't have to chase the football because there's pencils.
That makes sense.
They love it, 'cause the kids play kickball or foursquare, and they don't have to chase the balls, 'cause the pencil's there, and the pencil's still in good condition. Okay, I, trust me, you'll see, Megan, I will get a hold of Tim Chipman, is he from the whole Chipman family?
Yeah, yeah.
Bob Chipman's son.
Yeah. You know, and this is something I've always wondered about, because it's called Dewey Park, no one seems to know why it's called Dewey Park, maybe Tim, his students could research why we called it that, who Dewey is, if it is even anyone, you know, do you know?
It's gotta be somebody.
No, my dad probably did.
I bet he did.
Good, Bill O'Brady, obviously.
Yes, your dad, Ed.
Yeah, and I was, probably, you guys know.
Yes, my dad worked with him, yes, yes.
Uh, he was Paul.
Yeah, I was named for him, yeah.
And he was the principal official when I was in school, I think, uh, so.
Yeah, so that would be a great thing if he wants to work then into his school, 'cause I've always wondered, but I've never had time to research it, why it's called Dewey Park, because if it's a historical figure, like you do war memorials or something, a war memorial from, according to our attorney, that would qualify as a destination site. If we did, and that's a quiet thing, it's educational, if we just put it in one part of that park, that would qualify for using tourism money. So if there's some historical connection with Dewey, maybe that's our end, we don't know.
Was there a presidential candidate once upon a time?
Was he, I, see, I had no clue.
Yeah.
Was he really? That might be it then.
So, but historical money also is tourism money, so it still has to be the same outcome as far as.
We just have to find a niche, we have to find a way that that park would qualify, but also keeping it, you know, a nice, quiet, pretty presidential park.
Harry Truman, they had the headlines and the papers.
Chaos of the area.
Right.
Yeah.
Likely named after Dr. Grace Dewey, who was the first.
Passed it across the front page.
Oh, you think, is that it?
Where all the results were.
Ah.
I don't know, we live on Dewey Drive, three oh four.
Yeah, I never knew that.
And, um, actually, I never knew it was called Dewey Park until I looked it up some time ago, so I will, uh, I think getting the community involved.
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Is where we need to go.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. New business.
Old business, we have something, we're gonna, Paul and I have kinda been bouncing this off of one another, is there gonna be a South Jacksonville celebration before the end of the year?
Uh, anybody wants to organize one, then sure.
Yeah, I told them we had talked about it, didn't we talk about it in committee meeting, and?
We talked about putting it, having a little miss or mister at the.
Prairieland.
At Prairieland, but.
Then we kinda said, Tim, is your wife gonna do it, and it never went any further, she said no. And that's always the problem, is finding people to organize, yeah, 'cause it's tough.
I think there is people out there interested, I know our neighbor, uh, would be interested in helping with it, but, yeah, Kate's.
Gonna be here before we know it.
Yeah.
We're already halfway.
She has had many.
You got about forty-five eggs.
She's had multiple calls of people asking that, especially contestants from last year, and the queen from last year.
Is that Debbie Bobber?
I'm sorry.
Debbie Bobber, which neighbor are you talking about?
No, Zor.
Yeah, Melissa.
Taylor's, yeah, Melissa's daughter, Taylor, I guess, has been in several pageants.
Maybe Taylor would do it, she's young and energetic.
She's super awesome.
Yeah. That's what you need, is somebody young, get somebody, yes, go ahead.
I'd say I don't want to keep one, because he's not here, but John and I were talking, um, in the office one day, and he had said something about, um, why didn't we just do the pageant like they used to, which I wasn't here, and then, but he said something about the stage right out.
We used to flat bench.
Yeah, like in the.
Yeah.
Year, and then the gals get ready in here or whatever, so I mean, that's an option too, I guess, if we can't get it in time for Prairieland, or if that doesn't sound like such a good idea, Dewey, there's that option.
Well, you know, I was talking, you know, when I emailed you and Harry about the, um, Prairieland, the billboard information, that lady in that conversation said, again, she's like, I wanna be sure the village knows that we want to work with you guys, so I didn't even think about the celebration at that time, I just said, oh, thank you, you know, and, so maybe they would wanna do something, is what I was getting at, because she said she, she said, we're the village, and we've got all this space and that gazebo, and, so maybe it would just be finding a person.
And not to throw Rich under the bus, but I think that emergency services complex is really under, not underused, but I, I don't think the community realizes what kind of an asset that is, that's where we had it last year, and it was just tremendous.
It's such a nice building.
And then, too, you don't have to pay to get in, if you were at it there, like, friends, test samples up there, well, you don't even have to pay to get into Prairieland, too, if you haven't.
That's true, I didn't think about that.
But you're looking at potential thirty-five hundred to ten thousand people, or two, you know, versus, guys, I've been there for thirty-two years, over there, longer than that, really, and hell, you beat people to death trying to get them to come over there at this thing. Yeah, man, I thought it was a good point, when I was brought up about having it out there, but obviously, getting somebody to organize it.
Well, I think the fee to get in is, is a huge consideration, too.
How much is it to get in there? Is it?
Five, wasn't it?
Eight. It's eight bucks.
Oh, was it?
And they.
I didn't think about that.
They waived the fee for the kids, for the, for the contestants, they waived the fee, I'll guarantee that.
Yeah, they would, but probably not for the parents that get out.
That is pretty steep for families, if the whole family wants to come watch a pageant. So Rich, uh, those guys that are into the ambulance, do they put pageants on, like, in? Rich, do that at your next meeting, who would like to run a pageant?
How much luck a volunteer for that?
So that's a no. Well, I don't know, we'd have to figure this out pretty fast.
You'd think the dance studio, one of them would put it on, because that would be a good promotion for them, and.
It's a great idea.
Oh, look at you.
Only thing is, I think a lot of them are coming up on the, well, no, the recitals are in the spring.
I mean, that's what their focus is on kids that age, and you think they put their banner out there, and ah, ah, you know, and.
Stevens is right across from Prairieland there.
Right, or any of them, I mean.
One of them lives in South Jacksonville, so.
Who knows her?
Oh, make some phone calls, and see if we can get anybody that would like to organize it. Anything else?
You do that. You two, you two, you two could nominate, no.
A new business?
Yeah, um, I have a resolution expressing disapproval of village president Mayor Jennings's recent comments, and setting forth the high value that the Board of Trustees places on civil public discourse, um, Paula, you wanna read all this?
Uh, you can, go ahead.
Okay. Whereas it is of high core value of the village of South Jacksonville Board of Trustees that all citizens, visitors, and others who come in contact with the village employees and officials be treated with the utmost respect and integrity, and whereas the elected leaders of the village, and including specifically through the leadership of the village president, must set an example and tone for demonstrating respect and integrity, and whereas it is the board's expectation that the officials and employees of the village will consistently behave in a professional manner, show deference of those who disagree, and encourage public dialogue, and whereas village president Harry Jennings has posted social media comments which violated the values of the village of South Jacksonville, and which demonstrated a lack of judgment and professionalism, and whereas village president Harry Jennings made inappropriate comments about citizens, potential business owners, and confidential personnel matters which further violated the values of the village of South Jacksonville, and whereas the, uh, while mayor, uh, village president Harry Jennings has posted an apology on social media for some of the comments, the Board of Trustees finds that it is necessary to reinforce, uh, that this type of behavior is not tolerable within the village, and whereas by this resolution, the board desires to, uh, address village president Jennings's comments and reinforce our commitment to civil discourse, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of South Jacksonville, Morgan County in Illinois as follows, section one. The above stated recitals are incorporated here by ref, by, uh, herein by reference, section two, the Board of Trustees of the village of South Jacksonville hereby reaffirms its commitment, uh, to ensuring that all those who come in contact with the village be treated with respect and integrity, and a civil, uh, public dialogue isn't, is encouraged, the Board of Trustees further calls on village president Harry Jennings to reaffirm his commitment to lead the village employees and officials in furthering this culture of inclusion through positive example, section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effective immediately after its passage and approval, uh, approved by the Board of Trustees and village of South Jacksonville, Morgan County, and is signed by all six trustees.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dick Samples.
Yes.
Todd Ward.
Yes.
Paula Stewart.
Yes.
Jason Hill.
Yes.
Greg Nelson.
Yes.
Tom Jordan.
Yes. Any other business? This name.
The pictures of the website, um, they're looking at during the website thing, the first meeting of September twelve, right, Tom?
Can you say a lot of?
Sorry, picture, um, Dick and Megan specifically, please, if at the next meeting, um, you guys would come ready for pictures, and I'll just take them, because we might have the same.
I already got mine.
Do you have with the same background, like, was everybody else here?
Yeah.
Okay, good, then Dick, sorry.
No problem.
If we can get yours just with the same background, so everybody.
You wanna do it next Thursday, or you wanna?
Whenever, definitely, whatever next meeting we have, if you'll just come.
I'm not sure we'll be ready by next Thursday.
But we can get your picture, anyway, so I can get it to.
And Matt's gonna make the presentation for everybody to see.
Okay, and then.
Oh, yeah? So did I first.
And then, uh, maybe at the next one, we could get some group shots of the board, 'cause we weren't able to do that either, um.
'Cause Dick was gone.
Right, so just kinda keep that in mind, maybe, and then maybe we can do something like that, 'cause I know that's a big goal of Tom's, is to get more action shots of the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that'd be good.
And then also, the billboard, everybody saw the, do you wanna talk about that now, or?
The Wes Morton billboard?
Yes, um, the gentleman from, I guess it's Lamar, how you say it, advertising, you know, mid-day, and said that is still available, if you guys wanna pursue that, if you don't, obviously, it's fine, um.
What was the rate he gave us, two fifty a month?
It's really discounted from the other one.
But it's a, it's a half the size of a normal billboard, is it not?
You know, I've not, I've got a picture that he sent, um, it says it's illuminated, it's two fifty a month for twelve months, and the production would be a two hundred fifty dollar one-time fee, um, it was on the attachment, but.
And wasn't it, um, who was the hotel that was on that?
I'd say it's probably the same size.
Jessie, Super Eight, so I wonder why they didn't renew. I always wonder why people don't, if it was a good spot, why didn't they keep it, that's what I'm curious about.
Obviously, it's gonna have to be different, because whatever we have on the other one, it's the wrong way.
Yeah, opposite direction, but.
If we get it, my suggestion would, yeah.
Just change and change the.
Just change the directions and arrow or whatever, if we were to go forward with it.
Are you locked in for a year?
I thought you fell down on the chair.
It, it looks to me like it's a year, um, so you're looking at three thousand two hundred fifty bucks, if you wanna go for a year, by the time you do the production cost, and that's what we.
Okay, so what's the other, what's the other one cost us, a year?
Five hundred a month, so.
Five, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of.
And it was seven hundred, that was production, I'm pretty sure.
I don't remember.
Okay, yeah, the other.
And I think that was every six months, wasn't it, they said it would last?
Yeah, that's right, so the other one may be seven thousand-ish. So it's probably about half.
You know, the one thing about having it out there on the west end is, people come in that way, they drive by all these other hotels, and they may be looking for a brand name that they have stayed with, that we have here in the village, and if they can buy billboarded estates that, you know, it's here.
Yeah, 'cause they're not passing anything from the east.
What's our plan for billboards, 'cause if we're, are we wanting one from each entrance, or, you know, and, and do we, 'cause there's really no way to track it, I guess, but it's, I mean, we all think it's good.
We've always talked about the one on East Morton, the one on West Morton, never really, it just kinda popped up, and they, so.
It's a lesser price, I mean, I don't know that you'd ever prove how much traffic you get from that, but I don't know that that's a bad expenditure of money, you know?
I think it's probably, if nothing else, a good big gesture to the hotels.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I know people that take, uh, sixty-seven to St. Louis and back and forth and whatever, I'm sure lots more than just the people that I know do. uh, that are coming here as opposed to going somewhere else like that, and so, if they took that, you know, they would drive by it, and, I mean, I think that's built-in traffic, not as much as seventy-two, but, um, I mean, it's, it's not like putting one on North Main where people coming from Virginia are gonna drive by it?
Yeah.
Like, who is really gonna see it?
Complete waste of money, putting one out in North.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this one, there's at least built-in eyeballs, and, kind of like you were saying, they would just put it in their head, as they're driving through town.
Yeah, I, I like that, because there's some people that say, I'll stay at Hampton, or some people will say, I'm gonna stay at a Choice Hotel, because they may be a Choice Hotel member.
Mm-hmm.
They're not there, but they're out there.
Oh, yeah, my husband's work, they have one chain of hotels that their business always books them at.
It's Choice.
Yeah, because they have rewards and...
Holiday Inn reward, yeah, points rewards, and...
And so they look for those hotels, yeah.
And we're really only, uh, we're probably only up against two hotels, opposed to the four that's on board, is there only four?
I wouldn't know anymore.
Starlight, and Hampton Inn, and, uh, Best Western.
Well...
Super Eight. Super Eight, so there's four.
And Super Eight, yeah, well, that, we're talking about Wes Morton.
Oh, Wes Morton.
Yeah.
You know, so, your, your average people is probably not gonna stay at Super Eight or Starlight, so, and then, what is it, a hundred and something a night at, uh, behind Applebee's there, so...
Hampton Inn. I think it'd be money well spent.
I think so.
Yeah.
We have our, we just make it different.
I think it's probably a good idea.
So, let them know yes, and then we'll put it as an action item on the September meeting?
Yeah.
I, I would vote for it, that's my personal opinion, I think it would be a good idea out there to raise awareness, that, you know, the hotels are here for the people to come in, uh, from the left side.
Okay.
Greg, can you get me that image then, just so you can see it, turn it around?
You can turn it around the other way.
I've got more than something.
And that makes me think about this billboard out here, is there, now, Dick, that would have been when you were, like, in codes, maybe? That one on, at south of town that is not ours, it's Bartlet's that we use?
Oh, that, okay.
Is there anything, I've always been curious if there's like documentation that Bartlet lets us use that? Have you ever seen anything, Tiffany or Harry, have you, or, or Dick, do you know, because you were the only one?
I don't really remember them looking, you know, giving us any documentation. I need to call a lawyer again, I'll ask him.
Because I remember somebody saying at some point in time that there was a stipulation, like we couldn't advertise anything with tobacco and alcohol.
Yes, I, I remember that, but I don't know if it's true.
Tobacco, alcohol, or another green, oh.
Or another, and I, and I'd love to see that.
That makes sense.
So, and you know, there had to be something in writing somewhere, but, but I'll, I'll make a note calling it.
I just feel like that would be a safeguard for us to have.
Well, and it should be, uh, we should probably pass a, um, a resolution like we did for the other ordinance, other billboard.
Yeah.
Saying that this billboard would be used for, and that's a different billboard, we use it for different purposes.
Yeah, but then spell it out, so there's never a question, because you don't want to make Bartlet mad, and not, I'm not suggesting they are, it's just, if we don't know what the guidelines are.
But we put those stipulations, whatever their stipulations are, we put those in our resolution, and...
Because we're not renting it like we are the other ones, we know, we know what that agreement is. So right now, then, that would be three billboards that the village can utilize, that one being a totally different use, but then we're renting them too.
Two, yes. And we'll have another, it's a resolution, it might have been an ordinance that we passed for the East Morton, so we'll do another one for the West Morton, and it'll, it'll mirror the East Morton one, it'll be, I, practically identical to it, it'll just have different address for the West Morton billboard, so, um, and you also had in your packets there just one, just a note, that, uh, and I, I don't think all of you, we did some bank transfers, and we said we'd revisit that at the six months mark.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing a gentle reminder here, so, we're not gonna do it now, but we'll do it at our, preview that at our September, uh, committee meeting, so, we'll just go over those bank accounts and see what we think of our services, and go from there.
Uh, also, our, um, if I could just get a consensus from the board, are you okay with me sending out our check to Central Dispatch? We haven't made payments until March fifteenth, January, I didn't have the forces to pay them, uh, but now we have them, and we owe them, so can we go ahead and send that out, but it's fifty-two thousand dollars plus.
What's this for?
That's for nine-one-one.
It's, it's for nine-one-one.
Is it Tim's fault we didn't have the bill?
So I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with me going ahead and send that out before the next meeting.
What is it normally? You get, it, should it be monthly or yearly?
No, like quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
So this is for two...
So there's a new one, and the old one, that'll be listed, and I didn't think about it, because at the nine-one-one meetings, they always talk about, we're the only entity that pays ahead.
Oh, okay.
They're trying to get everybody else caught up, so that they're paying ahead, uh, but they make sizable payments, so for the city and county, it would, it's large funds. Anyway, that's the reason they always talk about South Jacksonville is paid, they're, they pay ahead, so if there was no red flag, all of a sudden, there was a huge red flag.
No, I wasn't trying to do that, I was just, I was kind of like, give permission before I send it out.
So you're asking for us to say yes now, before payables?
Yeah, I'll put a copy of it in with the payables, but I never send any out, we're not...
And how much is that, Tiffany?
Uh, fifty-two thousand, six hundred two dollars.
Okay.
So it'll be on the payable list, and the copy will be in there, but I want to go there tomorrow.
So what is it usually then, quarterly?
Twenty-six thousand, three hundred and nine.
Okay, so it should be that from now on, we hope.
For, for a while.
Till Tim forgets again.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else, if not, motion to adjourn?
I, I have a little question, uh, and, and you might, have, have we been approached anything from area, uh, sanitation on doing a, uh, in other words, the residents pay the hall, and then we pay area, because they've been doing this, like, Murrayville, Woodson, uh, Root House, we haven't been approached with that?
I have been.
Are you?
You haven't heard anything of this?
I'm not sure what you're asking, including, including the trash with, like, your utility bill?
No, what, yeah, what they do is, like, we would bill the, the resident, and then, in other words, we would already pay.
Including the trash with, like, you, like, on the water sewer bill, sort of, like that, or?
Well, they do it separate.
Okay, separate.
But then, basically, we're, the, the, the village or the town is the bank, and then, so we pay them, and then...
We've not been approached by them.
Alright, thank you.
No, that sounds like more...
Because it's a, and, and I see that they're starting to do it with all these place, you know, and maybe they won't with city, I don't know, but I just, I was curious whether they have approached South Jacksonville.
Hmm, that, that seems like kind of a undue burden on the municipality.
It's, uh, they're doing it, and what they're doing is, if you don't approve of it, let's say, let's say we voted and we wanted to do it, and you're, you're a member of this community.
Yeah.
You didn't approve of it, well, then, they're shutting your water and sewer off.
Well, some, yeah, I know some municipalities are doing that, where they include it in your, in, in with your utility bill.
And maybe that's what, that is what they're doing.
And what that does, is that forces every citizen to have, not only do they have water sewer, but now it forces them to have trash.
Maybe that's what it is.
Some people don't have trash, hey, I'm not gonna, me and you are gonna split a trash bill, and I'm gonna carry my trash.
Or you own a business, and you take your trash to your business.
And then some people let the trash pile up, and it can cause issues, so, I can see that.
It's a big pissing match.
Yes.
And I, I don't agree with this, so I'm glad that we haven't...
I don't think we've had that issue here, to the most part, so, um, we've not been approached by it, and I don't see that.
Because I see what's happening, is they're just, you know, if the residents aren't paying, well, then they're just going to the district and saying, well, this is our way to get there.
No, I, I don't think, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, so...
Next slide, that was on the next slide.
Right, 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 right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pose same sign. Alright. Just go down there if you want, and we'll jump down into our co-...